You're very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup with me, Roisin De Clerc.
And me, Paul Brophy. Roisin, we have a really fascinating guest this morning. We're delighted to be joined by Fine Gael councillor for Balmoolat in Mayo, Gerry Coy. But Gerry's also an author. He wrote a book about his late dad, Henry Coy, the forgotten freedom fighter. Gerry's dad, Henry, was born in eighteen ninety five and he was one of Michael Collins' trustee lieutenants during the both the War of Independence and the Civil War. And Gerry's father, Henry, also carried Michael Collins' coffin. After the war, Henry's dad got elected to the Dáil as a Mayo South, Mayo North or Mayo South TD in nineteen twenty three. But unfortunately, he only spent less than nine months in the role because unfortunately, he was debarred from the Dáil and is the only TD ever to be debarred since. So Gerry, you're very, very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup.
Thank you very much, Paul. Great to be with you and this lovely family of three.
Fantastic, yeah.
Do you happen to have a copy of your book with guide you or anything else?
I sure do.
Let's give that a plug.
That's the copy of the book. That's Henry Coy, the Forgotten Freedom Fighter. And believe it or not, that's a mugshot from the police on the front page. So it looked like he was at the hairdresser's office, but I don't think so. But that's the thing, and the writing on the back says it all, you know. If I quote what's on the back, can I do that?
Yeah, please do, please do.
When Mayo man Henry Coy was jailed in Scotland in March nineteen twenty one for possessing the largest quantity of illegal explosives ever found in Britain, police said they had captured one of the most important and most daring Sinn Féiners in either Scotland or Ireland. Ailed as a hero of the War of Independence, Coy's Glasgow wedding in June nineteen twenty two made the pages of the New York Times. And within days, he had returned to Ireland to fight in the National Army. Commented what his bravery during the civil war. He was elected to represent his native county in the Fort Dáil area. But by nineteen twenty four, Gheer Salaman was back in prison, this time at the behest of the Irish Free State. And incredibly, his conviction in Scotland for IRA arms smuggling was being cited as evidence of a criminal past. Denied an IRA pension and forced to raise his family in poverty, Coy is remembered today solely for the strange instinct that ended his Dáil career. After just six months, yet there is so much more to the remarkable life of Henry Coy. And this fascinating book by his son Gerry reveals the inspirational story of an Irish patriot who was not found wanting in his country's darkest hour. This is the enthralling tale of bravery and betrayal. It is the story of the forgotten Irish freedom fighter, Henry Coy.
It'll make me cry.
That's it.
And Gerry, your dad was born in eighteen ninety five during the when Ireland was under British rule and, you know, times were very, very tough and hard. So what was life like for him growing up and how did he get?
It was very tough. Life was very tough, but even that read the book, all the people, everybody in the village was poor. My father was over in Scotland with his father for months. He was thirteen years old on the potato fields in Scotland picking the potatoes. His father was a migrant labourer who used to go to Scotland and as each of the kids grew up. But my father would have been in the house with his mother when she was pregnant with other children while her husband was away in Scotland. And she was also looking after my father's grandmother and my father's mother. His, all his relations as well that were still in the house. So they were, they were there. The cattle was in the house with them. And my cousin, Pat Coy, who died last year, God rest him at ninety one, told me. He said they couldn't afford a stable and the cattle, he said, was as important as the people. So there was tough times, but there was tough times for everybody. So my father grew up seeing that poverty and seeing that sadness in the area. And I suppose as he grew up and grew stronger, he, he, he only went to the national school, you know. But very unique at the time, his mother, who was Mary Kierken from Shire, could read and write both Irish and English. His father could not. So she must have been teaching him about reading in books or something at home. Because he was a fantastic speaker, like he could stand up and make a speech. Like the speech he gave from the dock the day he was convicted, like if, if graduates gave it today, they'd say that man must have got a lot of education, you know. It was phenomenal, but, but what the way he done. But he was over and back to Scotland and then the, the first world war started in nineteen eighteen or whatever.
Eighteen fourteen.
Yeah, yeah, nineteen fourteen, eighteen. And he, there was a few of them didn't go to Scotland because they could be conscripted into the army to fight in France. So he decided if he was going to fight at all, he was going to fight for his own country and fight at home. So a group of them went to, to prevent an eviction down the road. There was a woman whose three of her children died in that massive flu that time. And she was being evicted from the house with one other son that was left, James McHugh. So they, a group of them went to prevent the eviction, a group of the, I suppose, the stronger lads. And as the papers recorded at the time, a fracas occurred with the RIC. And one of them was knocked to the ground by what they were calling on the paper, the leader of the group. But when I done the research, I found the leader of the group was none other than Henry Coy. And a few days later, they went to the house. He got a bit of a beating and he was taken to Balmoolat Court. And he was sent to Sligo Jail for two months. Now, I don't know who he met in jail or how he got so radicalized. But the Henry Coy that went into jail for fighting with the RIC was a different Henry Coy that came out. And I, I never was able to fully establish where he met Michael Collins. But he seemed to have been reporting directly to him during his time in England. But you know, ironically enough, the family were never evicted in the end. The eviction never took place after, whatever, few or the, that occurred. And I suppose when he got out of jail, during, during the time he was in jail, the magistrate who sentenced him was shot and killed in Westport. So the, it had nothing to do with him, but the RIC at the time, they looked back on all the cases, I suppose, that he had convicted in the previous few months and Henry Coy was one of them. So when he came out, he was constantly under surveillance from the RIC. So he went across to Scotland where he had been going since he was a child and he became the chief gunrunner in Scotland for Michael Collins. So like the amount of people that's forgotten, a man by the name of Joe Vies. And all these people that was in Scotland with him, it's, it's phenomenal, the way they were written out of the history books and left, you know. He had a young fellow with him the night he was arrested, Charles Strickland, but he, he went under his mother's name, McGinn. So he was known as Charles McGinn to the Vies. He was arrested in the car with my father. They were badly beaten and battered down on the road because the police wanted to know where they got all the stuff. They would never have been caught, but the car was constantly giving them trouble. But I suppose when you think of it, it was an old Austin car and it became known as the Sinn Féin motor car. I've actually, I'm home here, I'll do for you before we finish about the Sinn Féin motor car. But he, the car broke down and it kept breaking down. But one, they, they went out to collect this massive load of material outside, outside Scotland. A lot of the Irish people, a lot of the people over there were working in the mines. And they used to bring up a stick of gel ignite in their Wellington. After every shift, each one of them would bring up this gel ignite. So that they'd accumulate a massive amount of gel ignite and he'd go then with this Charles Strickland and they'd pick it up. But on the way back to Glasgow that night, the fan belt or something went in the car. And he pulled up, he pulled up with the load and asked two policemen, what was the way to the nearest garage? And they showed him and directed him to go and he went there. But when he went, when they went to, the course, the battery was flat. So when the car was repaired, they went to push it out, a group of people, and they became suspicious the weight. It was so hard to push it out. So one of them went up to the police station and reported it. And at this stage, the rest of the people had pushed it out and he had started and the police were coming up the road towards them, but they didn't try and stop him. But they, they rang the police stations further on. And he was caught outside a little village of Aloa after a car chase through the towns and villages. He was finally apprehended and the car was taken. He, he eventually got sentenced in, in Scotland for five years penal servitude in Peterhead Prison for that. So, but when you think of it, like those people in this country have been hung for having one or two guns. Actually, the day his trial started in Scotland, six, the headlines on the paper say, six Irish rebels hanged in Dublin. Sensational Sinn Féin trial begins in Scotland that same day. Well, so. And you know, there were constantly, he, he, he was the chief purchaser and gunrunner. He was bringing the stuff to, to Liverpool to the, and a man by the name of Neil Kerr. Neil Kerr has never been mentioned either. And according to Joe Vies, two thirds of the stuff that was used in the, in the War of Independence here came through the hands of Neil Kerr, the parts of different parts of England. He was in charge of shipping and things there in Liverpool. And the Saturday night after the Black and Tens killed the people in Crow Park, they burned eighteen warehouses in Liverpool. I didn't know what I'd tell you the last day or not, but two sisters from Cork, but all the paraffin, Sheila and Kathleen Brown. Well, they never, never got the recognition they deserve either. One of them was a teacher and the other one was, worked in Hughes' Provision Stores in Scotland or in, in Liverpool. So, you know, there was an awful lot of them. Another poor woman by the name of Kate Lee, my father used to stay with her in Glasgow. And she, she kept the guns and ammunition in the house. And if people came to our house with a gun or with things, my father had authorized her to pay for them. And she said, my father would give her the money afterwards for, for the material she bought. That poor woman pleaded for a pension here and never got it afterwards, you know. It's sad, sad. But everywhere the men were treated after independence, the women were completely mistreated.
Yeah.
Completely mistreated, written out, written out of the history books, written out of everything. But my father, my father never spoke too much about it, but when, when, he was sixty three when I was born, so he was seventy when I got to know him. But when I was fourteen, I realized his story was a bit different than everybody else's. And I had a brother Willie, my, I, I was six years old when I realized I had two older brothers because they were gone by the time I got to know them. The way it was, the way it was in this house, the oldest person went this and the money for the next person to go. The next person went this and the money for the next person to go. At one time or another, the nine of us was gone. And that was after my father spent the best years of his life fighting against England. Most of us went to start off in England. Also, I suppose there's an irony in that alone. You know, but that's the way it was and it's, it's, it's basically what happened them after. But like, but what amazes me, what amazes me doing the research is that you had untrained and inexperienced soldiers brought the might of the British Empire to the negotiating table.
Yeah.
We too, in this country, we had no, we had never negotiated a treaty, we had never negotiated a rights. The negotiations took place by untrained and inexperienced negotiators.
Yeah.
In, in my opinion, the question should have been, how did they get so much? Not that they didn't get it all, because like what they got.
They never would get it all.
It, it, it was phenomenal what they got. It was absolutely phenomenal. But, but was the problem with my father, Collins and my father and several of them, they were thirty two county Republicans. They may have fought for the National Army, but they were thirty two county Republicans. McGinn that fought my father or was with my father, he was from Belfast. So my father wasn't going to turn us back on him. And then, you know what I mean? But like, it was sad what happened in the civil war, like it was so, so, so sad what happened like. Because they knew, they knew the only way to get it was to take the twenty six counties first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And as I say, since then, you know, the border hasn't moved a millimeter up or down. There was three thousand two hundred people killed in what we call the troubles. This border still in the same place.
Yeah.
You know, it, it, it was sad, like we had the civil war, all the people that got killed. We had all the people killed and since, like, I, I don't know, but I, I think what they got was absolutely phenomenal.
Yeah.
You know, I think Max Weenie that died in, in Cork. I think his, his words, he said, it's not who can inflict the most punishment that will prevail, but it's who can endure the most punishment that will prevail.
Yeah.
Say that again. I like that.
He said, it's not who can inflict the most punishment who will prevail, but it's who will absorb the most punishment or who will take the most punishment that will prevail. And that, that's exactly what they're doing. Like when you think like my father's people here, they were harassed when he was arrested in England. You know, I, I, I often wondered, you know, for a long time, what his parents thought when their son was in jail in, in, in nineteen twenty one and Peterhead Convict Prison or in Liverpool Prison in nineteen twenty one. He was one of the very few people, he'd done time here in, for the first thing, he was jailed here in Ireland. He was jailed in Scotland and he was on trial in England, being held in jail while the trial was on in Liverpool. He was actually found not guilty. They, they proved he was there a night or two before the fires. They proved he was there after the fires, but they couldn't prove he was there on the night. You know, they had witnesses to tie him into it and all that. They actually, funny enough, you know, they got a way more better treatment than ones afterwards. Because the, the, the court system seemed to treat them sort of fairly. You know, even like the amount of questioning, he was badly beaten in the, in, in the jail the night he was taken in in Scotland. And there was a massive fight on the country road. There's a woman that went down to identify them a week later and she said, she recognized two of the men as people that used to come to visit Coy where he was staying. But she said she didn't recognize the prisoner Coy because his eyes were bulging and his head was bandaged, you know. So that was it. Look at it's, it's.
And Mike, sorry Gerry, you had the great foresight to actually record your dad on an old kind of tape, tape recorder, which, you know, which was really, really an amazing thing.
It was amazing. It was amazing for us, first of all, to have the tape recorder because my brother Willie, who you'll still, if you look up his name, Willie Coy, he, he sings Mayo songs. And he, he was mad for Elvis or whoever was the singer back then. And he brought the little thing home. It, it was the first time I ever seen these small little tapes. It used to be a big reel for that. But he bought this little thing home for playing the tapes. There was only four buttons, but there seemed to have been a place for a fifth button. You know, that there was a button missing of it. So it was here at the house and when, when they'd be home, they'd be playing these tapes and he'd have tapes left after them then when he'd come again. And, you know, I was messing with it one day and I seen there was another button. So I, I was fascinated by mechanics and different gadgets from once I was very young. I loved fixing. I loved wondering how even the free wheel of a bike had worked, that it wouldn't, that it had let the thing clip around and go back in. I was always interested in that kind of thing. And God, I started messing about it. And I found the button that was missing was a record button that had been broken off. So I, I took out one of the other buttons that was in it and I pared down a little bit of timber. Paired it down, made it the same shape and put it in the place where the other button was. And I pushed it down. I found that the oak could record. And then I've recorded, there, there was little clips on the bottom of the tape that'd break out. And I took them and I put sellotape over them and I started recording the IRA Comedant Henry Coy. And I have his voice telling the story.
And, and Gerry, what kind of, like Michael Collins, he, he goes down in history as a kind of a very, very, you know, charismatic and a figure, I suppose your father would have, would have literally taken a bullet for him.
And I have it on the tape. My father would say Michael Collins was born a hundred years before his time. He was talking about plastics and aluminium. He was talking about the planes landing in the water that my father only seen in his later years. He was talking about Ireland feeding the world. My father, a tear would come to his eye when he'd mention Michael Collins. I mean, like he would just swell up even when he was eighty. If there was a mention of Collins, there was a mention of sadness in his voice. There'd be a quiver in his voice. And there'd be a quiver in his voice of some, some of the great people that fought with him and soldiered with him and who were killed in the civil war. He'd say, we were, you know, instead of fighting the real enemy, we started fighting ourselves. You know, he, he was a, you know, he, he, he was just, you know, he said Ireland could be one of the greatest nations in the world. Not that it isn't now, but he said, if we spent our time, he said, building up our country and making more progress on Northern Ireland. And, you know, he, he, he was a far scene man and, you know, but he, he would always mention Collins. Like it was like, it was just, there was this, you know, respect. And I said it in the book, you know, I, I think my father would have followed Collins to hell and back. And sometimes I think he did, with all that happened them after, you know. But like how a man down burden and poverty himself, kind of in West Cork, could radicalize a man in the fair west of Mayo to do his bidding and to be with him and to believe in him so much. How, how, you know, there was no internet, there was, there was no, you know, there was no smartphones, no smart TVs, but there was a lot of smart people.
Yeah.
Like that.
There was a lot of smart people, you know, that's the way it was and that write letters and, you know, like I, I, I said here that I wondered what his parents thought of him when he was in jail. And then when I, when I came on the full extent of the trials, I seen a letter. It was supposed to be signed by his father, which wasn't so, it was his mother that wrote it. And they basically wrote to him saying, we are glad to know you're still at large. And please, if you attempt to come to Ireland, be very careful. They're keeping a close eye out for you. Wishing you the best in your, in your thing and blessing him for what he was doing and that. And the, the letter was found in his sock, but his address was torn off the top corner of it in case they'd ever catch him. That they wouldn't be able to find out where he was living. You know, the, the address, the address it was going to was gone. But they, they read the letter in the court, in the court in Scotland, you know, they read the letter. And I suppose, you know, I, I always wondered, but then I thought, you know, these, they were, they were, you know, they wanted them to do it because they seen the poverty he came from, like, like his father and mother, like would have been burdened during the famine. You know, it's, it's amazing that you're talking to someone now with that direct link back to the, you know, they'd have been burdened, you know, in, in the, in the family, you know.
And it's a real honor, it's a real honor and privilege to be chatting and talking about this, this story. It's, it really is amazing. And what about your poor, your poor mother during this whole, whole time? How did, how did she deal with it?
My, 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 my father, my father, my father first married in Scotland. My father married in Scotland first on the twenty sixth of June nineteen twenty two. The picture is in the book of the wedding. The wedding featured on the New York Times. And the New York Times said Coy stood trial in Liverpool. Ten members of the Irish Free State Army in full military uniform were present yesterday for the marriage of IRA Comedant Henry Coy. Now, he was presented with a teapot on the day with his name inscribed on it. And that teapot is in the military archives of the GPO in Dublin. It's item number fourteen in the GPO. And it says about them transporting the guns and materials back. It was presented to him by the officers and staff of the Dundee Company of the IRA, which consisted of two thousand five hundred men. Two thousand five hundred men, like was involved in the IRA activities in, in, in Scotland, you know. And like, he, he married a woman by the name of Margaret Maxwell Ferry. And that they got married, he didn't go on the honeymoon because they, he came to Ireland the next two days after and joined the National Army to fight in the civil war. And he was almost killed up in Swinford. And he was, there was eighteen bullets put in the car and things that there were in. And there's, you'll see in the, in the picture from carrying Collins' coffin, there's a bullet mark in his cheek and a slept dad was bandaged. He got out of his hospital bed to go to Dublin to be at the funeral of his buddy Collins. So that's how he's there. He's carrying the coffin. Now, he told me in the interviews that he carried the coffin, but I never had the proof. And then there's a great fella up there, Darren Conroy is his name. He's up in the Midlands there and he's all this research into Collins. I searched reels of the old film and I searched two thousand six hundred and eighty four pictures. And one day I was going through, I linked myself into anyone that had anything to do with Collins. And then straight away, this Darren Conroy posted this picture one day. Soon as I seen it, that's him. That's the bullet mark. That's what he described and that's him in the picture. So I contacted Dad and rang him, told him, I said, I am, he couldn't believe. But I met him afterwards at the two hundred year celebration at Balmoolat. I have a picture of him and me in the book, Darren. And he's done great phenomenal work and, you know, researching stuff of Collins and all that. And that's how I got the picture. But I had the picture of the wedding, the original picture, right? The original wedding picture that was taken on the day and it's, it's phenomenally clear, like from, from a hundred years ago. You know, but it was great that I suppose so much stuff passed down through the generations that I could manage to keep it. But I, I, I had been meaning to do the book. And then my nephews Brendan Conway, God rest him, they used to come home to Ireland every summer. For, for the summer holidays, we'd drive in tractors here with me to be at the turf. They'd be at the hay, you know. And they'd come home every year and they'd be singing these rebel songs. And I said to Brendan one day, by the way, Brendan died, he, they were at a thing one night and he was doing chin ups on a tree or something and hit his head. And he never regained consciousness, but anyway, he died. And, but before that, he'd be singing these rebel songs. And I said, there's more of a rebel in you than what you think. And I played him the tapes. He was fascinated. So when I was doing the research, there was no internet. There was no, we were lucky to have a phone in the house, much less to have a mobile phone, which is or anything like that. So I used to be over in, in Liverpool and then Manchester researching the old papers and all that. And I came on all the gear. And then Brendan died tragically and I said, oh, I just lost interest in him. I left it there for years. And eventually a fellow by the name of Shane Coleman, who was a very prominent journalist in Dublin, wrote a, a book about jailed TDs. And he had my father in with all these jailed TDs. And you know, well, I said, I'm going to tell a story. And I told the whole story. I sent the book to Shane. Shane was doing his job. He went on the papers that he's seen here that this man was debarred from the Dáil and all this kind of thing. But like, my father obviously had a fallout with Collins and O'Higgins because he was a thirty two county Republican. And he wasn't going to, he was supposed to be one of the TDs that was going to resign because of the mutiny in the army. And a few days later, he was arrested for cashing a cheque. And he was, he was brought to court. Last thing, was jailed for three years here. People that were hit with machine guns and robbed banks and post offices were out. And this man that brought them the guns and the, the, the machine guns was jailed. But the most shocking thing to me, the most shocking thing to me was the case in Scotland. Even if it was a genuine case here, even if it was one hundred percent genuine. What was used as evidence of a criminal past was his trial in Scotland for bringing the guns trial. You couldn't make it up. If, when you see the book, like people wouldn't believe it, but I put the chat sheet in and I put the sign in. And that was also used to stop him getting a pension.
What?
Gee, what? That was signed, when you read the book, you'll see that was used to stop him getting a pension. This conspiracy thing in Scotland was signed out. Coy was jailed previously in Scotland for conspiracy. Conspiracy, they called it, because there were so many people with him that they tried to bring the case under the whole of them. A few got half in Scotland, but most of them were jailed and that, you know. But look at it's, as I say, there's no sense looking back. There's, there's a, there's a big windscreen in your car for looking in front of you. There's only a small rear view mirror.
I like that. I like that. But Gerry, my grandmother used to always tell me, and I've got a photograph over here, and you weren't allowed to mention, that's my grandmother. You weren't allowed to mention Amy Devallera in her house. You can mention Michael Collins. And I never knew why until I came down inside because I never had much interest, you know. I just knew, I was young. I was just, you know how young ones are.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know.
Michael Collins was set up by Devallera. Michael Collins even knew when he went over to England, he signed his own death warrant.
Oh, sure. He knew that. He knew.
He wanted to, he did, yeah.
But like the, as I said to you, the question should have been, how in the name of God they got so much? Now, my father said, my father told me that he had spoke, he brought these men from Scotland to meet him. They all got out of prison and he thanked each of them, he said individually in the room for, for, for the great service that had given. And he said that Churchill showed me that the wall with all the places that England don't. And, you know, they had this colors. And he said, if you were with us, we could have it all. He said to Collins. Collins said, do you see that little bit there? That's all I want. For, he pointed, he put his finger on Ireland. He said, that's the only bit I want. He said, you know, so look at, it, it is what it is. And, you know, it, it's sad. We, we cannot change the past and it's no use trying. Like what we have to do now is make sure that we have peace. We have to be at peace, you know. And no matter how big the war ever was, the only way it ended was people sitting down around the table to, to, to thrash it out. But like, I, I, I might have mentioned to you the last day, but like, it, it, like, all they got, take, we, we now have the hindsight of a All they got, take, we, we now have the hindsight of a hundred years behind us. And we have the might of Europe behind us, we have the might of America behind us, and we can solve the Northern Protocol. Which has nothing to do with territory at all, it's only about paperwork. So like, what they achieved is surely and truly phenomenal. That these people, it's truly phenomenal what they achieved. And you know. Like the eight, the seventeen of them that came out of Peterhead Prison on the day. What hasn't been much publicized either is the amount of people that got out of prisons because of the treaty. Returned their families, say, in Mayo. There was seventeen of them came out of Peterhead Prison that particular day that my father got out. They were interviewed at the train station.
How many seventeen?
There was seventeen came out in that group, in that group, but there was a load more, but they were waiting for so many things. That, that's why the, the, the reporter even said that the men didn't say much about, about the, the conditions they had to survive in. Because they knew what might be taken out on some of their comrades that was still inside.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, different groups of them came out in different days. I suppose they didn't want them all coming out together because. They might cause a bit of rumpus on the streets or something in, 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 in Scotland. But you know. They were phenomenal people. They were great people. They came, they went, they went about their business. But you know, in, in later years, my father completely disagreed with the, the, the later IRA that came often. Because when he'd be watching the television here, he said, we never, ever, ever killed innocent people. He said, if we did, it was a mistake. He said, there was a man killed in Liverpool the night, but he said, we didn't go to kill innocent people. We went out to blow up the railway tracks. To blow up the, the, the warehouses, to do all that. We never, we never, we never went out to kill innocent people. And he, the night the Birmingham six people were arrested and taken in and they were convicted. I was sitting in the house, there was all loaded news at the time. The news came on one nine o'clock or whatever time it came on, that was it. It wasn't a rewind, it wasn't twenty four hour a day news. And he says to me, he said, them are innocent people. He said, them are innocent men. And I was looking at him, I said, how, how, how can you make that out? He said, the men were caught at the boat one day, he said, or arrested at the boat. He said, that's the last place they'd be, if anything like that. He said, we'd be back at work the next day. We wouldn't go to the boat for the plane or the train. He said, we'd be at work the next day, no matter what we do. He said, them people are innocent. And I got, I was thinking of us, but he said to me, like, years later after he had died, they, they, they were. Proof that they were innocent people, you know, so I suppose he knew it. He said, even back in the day, then he said, with communications not like it is now, he said, we, we would never be. We would never be at the boat or the plane, you know. So, you know, the, the, it was, eh, it was sad times, it was. But they gave us the freedoms we have today. We should acknowledge that and we, we should be thankful for that.
I think Michael Collins is a hero. So if your father served with Michael Collins, he's a hero as well.
My father served with Michael Collins. My father would still cry when he was eighty or eighty one, when he had a census. Every time the name of Michael Collins was mentioned, he would bring a tear to his eye, you know, but I, I. I, I brought the sleeve in a man care here to his Allah for our festival a few years ago and, you know, that brought a tear to my eye. Because like, there was the car that was in the parade with Collins that my father cried about so many times. And you know, he, he, he'd, like, it was, how does he reverence and respect when he spoke of Michael Collins? I could never, you know, it was only when I went into the full research and seen what my father had been through, how he still. Like Collins was his hero, like Collins was the man that we'd have nothing but for him. We wouldn't have been able to do this for him, we wouldn't have this for him, you know, he, he really and truly. But I, 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 getting back to my father's story, he married in Scotland and. Their first baby died. Right? And they had a second baby. And the baby lived, but the wife died, his wife died. And then. You see, she was a Scottish woman, even though her, her mother's name was Maguire. She, the, she was a Scottish person and they tried to take the baby off him then. Because to them, he was a terrorist. He was this fellow that had been in jail in Ireland. He had been on trial in England, he had been in jail in Scotland and he was married to their daughter. So like, they tried to keep the baby on him. So he, he gone down to see the baby, so he smuggled the baby back here to Ireland, took her back. To, just took her back to, to, to Mayo. So, eh, she then was rare that her sister and Billy Cry. His sister had a daughter much the same age. So he, 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 he was a gifted tradesman, my father, whether he was taught it in the prison or what, but he could live. He could build the house we actually lived in, he built it with his own hands. When the buys were away, sending the money back from England and America to, to get it done. So, uh. After all that, there was nine of us red in two rooms.
Wow.
Well.
Yes, pure abject poverty. He was denied a pension for years and years, never got the back pension when he eventually got it. And we, we, I suppose we grew up very close. I left school myself very young because I wanted to get out to make money. Because my mother's biggest fear in life was that she'd end up in the county home. You know, so I wanted to make sure that was never going to happen and all my daughters and sisters had the same idea and they were sending the money back. Like I was the youngest of them and, and you know, we were. The last three of us, we were the poorish kids in the class, but we were the best thrashed because we had the clothes from England and America. So, so it, it was, yeah, but he brought the child back and. She was rare there and when he married my mother then, they decided to bring the child. Billy Cry is only about. Well, the class that see there is only about four, four miles, but she got the roads about nineteen miles. So they brought the child down, but she cried and cried while she was looking for who she thought was her mammy. But he wrote an amazing monologue for her too, when he told her that her mother was dead. Absolutely an amazing monologue that he wrote for her.
Hmm.
Eh, but look at, it's, it's, eh, it was sad, but. They, she went back again and there was nine of us, but we were very close to her and she passed away a number of years ago. She'd always come here in the summer, she, like everyone from this area, they all immigrate to England and America, you know. I often, I said in the book, we, we were all rare on Cowan Gate down here. Someone got the cow. Somebody got the cow and the rush got the gate. So that's how it was. I, I, I said another few things of the, that people do comment on. There was no best before date of the food, it was just best evident before somebody else did. So the, that was the story and look at. He might have made mistakes in his life, he might have done different things in his life, but he was an amazing father.
What I must stand to that, when you think about it, is how, what the key things, but it's also said, which are really important. That your father, who fought for Ireland, a hero and fought and, and had direct contact with Michael Collins. Was refused his pension.
And what was used against him was the case in Scotland, written on, written on the sheet by a minister. Please note, please note Kyle was jailed in Scotland for conspiracy. They tell in the book, it's there.
And that's here in Ireland, you think.
That's here in Ireland because he, I. One person had a, a view on it. Seamus Reader wrote an article in England, he said, Henry Kyle was on Collins's intelligence committee. He was writing about him. And he said, Henry Kyle was on Collins's intelligence committee. And I suppose. This was a man that never got any schooling. And he rose to the very top. He, the, the, the case in Liverpool was so important to the British government. They sent down the Attorney General, Sir Gordon Hewitt, to prosecute them. He was one of the signatories of the treaty afterwards. He prosecuted my father in Liverpool in that case. And it's amazing that my father knew of, or had met a person on both sides of the. He, he knew Collins and he had met the Gordon Hewitt in the court in Liverpool.
Yeah.
You know. Look at it, it's a, it's a sad and strange tale, but look at, it's, it's no good looking back, as I said. And you know, eh, the, the thing I'd like to make in your broadcast here.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter what, what happens in your life, what mistakes you make. It doesn't matter how far out the tide goes, it always comes back in. And the worst day you ever had is only twenty four hours. You know, the worst day you ever had is only twenty four hours. So people should, should, you know. Eh, eh, young people especially, if they make a mistake, you know, it's not the end of the work. And I like to tell young people, you know, i- i- if you're going along in the cab and you miss the road to turn off. The sat nav redirects you. There's always another route to where you're going. So don't get, don't get down on it, don't, you know. I never heard the word anxiety, depression or stress in our house.
No.
And I've never heard them words. I never, never knew anything about. You know, we were out, we'd be working, we'd do our own bits of work here on a small little, small little farm, and then we'd be sent to the neighbours to do their work. And we'd be sent to anyone that was a widow or something, we'd be sent down there. And I suppose that's what got me involved in politics, was trying to help others. Because that's the way we were rare. We were rare to go out, help these people, do the best you can for them, help them along. Whatever way you can and look at, it's, as I said, it's a strange tale, it's a funny tale, but. That's the tale of the forgotten freedom fighter, Henry Kyle, you know, so.
And Jer- and Jerry, your dad, he was a, a TD for a short period of time and.
Well, you see.
The only TD to be debarred.
Well, you see, the rules have changed since. You could be, you could be, you could, the rules completely changed since. Because like you could be bankrupt, you could be everything now and you can still go back as a TD. He's the only man that ever was or ever will be debarred from the doll because the rules have completely changed now.
Wow.
You cannot be debarred from the doll now. If you've spent ten years in jail, you can go back if you're elected. You know, so you, you know, there's, there's, there's no debar now. If the people want you back, they have you back. So politics. My father.
If he put a, a longer spelling as a TD, what he'd like to have done.
My father could fight with guns, but he couldn't fight with politics.
Hmm, good point.
You know what I mean? He, he, you know, I remember one of the reporters asking me the night I was elected first. He said, is there any difference between the politics and the boxing? I said, in the boxing, you know, the opponent.
Hmm.
You know, but you don't know, eh, politics is a strange game. We were kept away from politics. My mother had to dislike your politicians.
Yeah.
You know, because I suppose they'd come to the door when. The women, her and women like her, they were raising their children for export, you know, with no light at the end of the tunnel. You know, but like, eh, you, we, we, we take for granted what the immigrants have achieved. When you think the most powerful nation in the world will block the streets of the biggest cities in the world for the Irish to march up on St Patrick's Day.
True.
You know, just what they have achieved. You see, they left without any education or anything, but they had something more important with them. They had intelligence. And it was when the intelligence met the education, it was onwards and upwards for the Irish abroad. When you see what they've achieved, just think about it. Joe Biden is in the White House, his people left on the coffin chips on Belenah. Just imagine, you know, JFK, the same thing, they went on the coffin ships too.
JFK, yeah.
You know, so like, when we think, eh, but I honestly think myself. The, the biggest advancement that was made in Ireland was the free education. And I don't think it should be recognized because it gave us all a chance. We didn't have to go to the priest or the. Guard or so much for signing a letter, then to write a letter for us. Everybody got a chance at the education. And there's no doubt at all about it, the Irish people are an intelligent race of people.
With a lot of good scholars.
You know, like, you know, we're at the UN, like Pascal Donner, who has headed the Europeans to finance ministers. Do you know, it's just like when you think of it, what we have, what as a nation we have achieved and the stuff we have achieved and the things we have done. Like, you know, as I said, they were smart people. No smartphones, no smart TVs, just smart people.
Smart people.
Do you know where, sorry Paul.
Jerry, you said, you said you had a poem, um, there.
While he was waiting, while he was waiting. While he was waiting in, in the jail in Liverpool. He, he had been arrested in Scotland with a load of jelly night, so they traced the car back to Liverpool, they traced him to the fires. They traced the woman, seen the car drive away with a woman with a gallon of paraffin. He wrote, he wrote several poems, but he, I'll read you the one first that he wrote about. The Sinn Féin Motor Car, it's called.
Yeah.
And eh, he's kind of summing it up what had happened. How he was here in the Liverpool prison now or waiting this trial. So. He, he, he's telling the story about being caught in Scotland a few weeks before that. So this is basically how it went. It was on the fourth of December, a motor United go, I steered my course to Fiveshire, I'll have you all to know. To help my faithful comrades who are fighting in the war and to strike a blow for Ireland with the Sinn Féin Motor Car. I said unto our volunteers, this day I'm going to see what I can do for my country and to set old Ireland free. To drive out the tans and tyrants who are making on the war and to fight for dear old Ireland with the Sinn Féin Motor Car. I had a faithful comrade, young Charles Strike Land, our firm determination was to free our native land. But coming back that very night, we did receive a scare while working for old Ireland with the Sinn Féin Motor Car. The police and Aloa and the car that it's around and told us we would never more set foot on Irish ground. Though threatened with execution, battered, bruised and bleeding on that country road. Would refuse to tell the secrets as to where we got our load. Early next morning, we were charred before the bear, we're breaking the law in Scotland with our Sinn Féin Motor Car. One day in a Glasgow prison, a stranger there I spied, the governor said you must come out to be identified. Said he, I'm an English chief constable and I've travelled very far to see this dangerous rebel in his Sinn Féin Motor Car. He said, Kyle, you have conspired with people we do not know. You've tried to ruin our country and our government to overthrow. You brought guns and explosives to Liverpool and paraffin in a jar and you tried to burn our cities down with your Sinn Féin Motor Car. They drove me off to England, my trial there to stand for being an Irish rebel from dear old Ireland. And now I'm in a prison cell, a prisoner of war for possessing high explosives and a Sinn Féin Motor Car. But God will grant my liberty for that I always pray, I hope to meet the tyrants upon a future day. Although they've got me this time, I feel not wounded or scared and I will fight again for Ireland with the Sinn Féin Motor Car.
Oh, that makes me cry. Your, and your father wrote that.
Well, if that makes you cry, when you hear the next one, have the, have the tissues, have the tissues ready. He wrote this, um, he wrote this one. He wrote this for his daughter when he told her that her mother was dead.
Oh.
Uh-huh.
And for a man. That was a terrorist to some, a freedom fighter to others, and he was a father to me. This man that wrote this is the man I knew as my father. This is the man I knew as Henry Kyle, the father, the great father. We had a great father, we had a wonderful mother. How she managed to feed us all, I never understand. How she managed to survive through it all, I'll never understand. They had no house, they had no place to live and they had nine of us and you know, there was none of us small. We were all sort of well able to look after ourselves when we grew up. But I actually think the fellow come in one time to turn off the electric in the house with the bill not being paid. But anyway, look at, it's, as I said, no good looking back. But this is the poem he wrote for his daughter.
Oh.
And he told her that her mother was dead.
Oh.
I saw my daddy looking at a picture on the wall. It was one among a number, but the loveliest of them all. It was a picture of a lady, how beautiful was she? With a pleasant smile upon her face, I thought she smiled at me. Then I looked into my daddy's eyes and they were filled with tears that set me wondering very much and filled my heart with fears. Because I love my daddy so, I know how he loves me, the big tears flowing from his eyes, I could not bear to see. I said to my dear daddy, why do you look so sad to know that lovely lady could only make you glad? Then he took me in his arms and he sat me on his knee, saying that lady is your mammy and your God's own gift to me. It's very hard to tell you, dear, and disappoint you so, but I cannot hide the threats from you when it's better that you know. But haven't I, my mammy daddy dear, said I, and if you say she's not my mammy, you will only make me cry. To have another mammy, I'm sure that cannot be, for no one has two mummies and there is only one for me. I know she loves me dearly and I love her so well, and what my mammy means to me, there's no one else can tell. Then as if to hide from me, my daddy stooped his head and said, my darling little pet, your mammy dear is dead. God's angels came and took her when you were very small and that's her lovely picture now that's hanging on the wall. Eternal rest and happiness to her, our Lord will grant, and the one you call your mammy now is just your only aunt. She took you when your mammy died and nursed you tenderly, just as your mammy would have done had she been spared to thee. Now I'm sure you all feel sorry for a little girl like me, to know I've lost my mammy and my age is less than three. But I have my own dear auntie and I will give her all my love and I know my mammy will send down her blessings from her bright home above.
Oh my God, that's lovely.
Yeah, but that, 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 that is amazing. Um, Jerry, um. Firstly, thanks a million for taking the time to talk with here on eh, the Irish political owners. It really is a really. Powerful and amazing story. And if people want to eh, find out more about your dad's story, eh, where can they.
It's on buythebook dot I E, that lady inside goes on Mayo Books dot I E. And eh, if they contact me directly, I'll post them out thing and I can take payment. It's the book, it's in. As I said, it's in the Easton shops, it's in the different shops here in Mayo, I don't know how many Eastons has it around the country. But it's on By the Book. It's also for sale in a bookshop in Glasgow. Eh, I forget the name of the, the, the book. I done a launch in Glasgow too, they wrote me over. There's a great fellow over there called Stephen Cole, no relation, but he has done amazing work researching all the people that fought for Irish freedom.
Yeah.
And all they've done for the freedom of Ireland. And I think eh, you know, it's, we should always acknowledge it. And that's the story of the, you know, but people would really need to read the book and see what's in it, see how.
I'm gonna buy the book. I'm gonna buy the book. I have one here of Michael Collins here and um, you know what? Your book will take pride in place as well.
Well, it, it will, it will stand very well beside that one. You know, I have all them books on Collins and all that. This book now, this, I, I don't know what I showed you the last, it's a heavy, it's not just a, this is a, you know, but I, I think it can get. Yeah, well, I know for sure you can get it on Mayo Books dot I E and you can get it on By the Book. By the Book dot I E or By the Book dot com, eh, you know.
So buy it directly from yourself, yeah.
You can buy it directly from myself too, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Jerry, it was an absolute pleasure and really, really fascinating to hear eh, your dad, your dad's story, so much depth and um. You know, I think it's, it's a story that we should all kind of reflect on. Um, we, as we say, we're, we're in a decade of commemorations. And your dad certainly played a massive role in the formation of the, of the Irish state we, we have today.
All and God rest them all and I hope they're happy in heaven now, rejoicing about what they've done, but they definitely eh, gave us a great legacy. And the, the onus is on us all to make sure we go out and vote, to make sure. We respect people that come to the door, even if they have different views than us. You know, a lot of the time here, you know, I, I done different things with the, watching the Brexit thing and all that. Like in our father's time, millions of people died in a war in Europe, you know, they died in.
You guys, I think.
So like, we should. We should never take that peace for granted. Like, there isn't a day that we waste by. Here, eh, my job as a councillor, that I don't fight against European rules and regulations. But I'm fighting them with a pen and a laptop, not with a rifle and a machine gun. And would I prefer them European rules and regulations than having my children conscripted into an army? To fight in a war that they didn't understand, yes, I would. Give me all the European rules and regulations. I fight them here all the time because of S A Cs and H As, young people trying to get planning, you know, and. People trying to tell them they can't get planning, you know, and eh, for, and, and property, like, you know, that, that's my views on it. And that's, I think we should, and in democracy, we should never forget another thing. The smartest race of people in the world could Hitler in as their leader. When we go to Pecasta or what, we should always remember them things. And eh, be, you know, the, the, the great honour it is to be able, you can talk, you can complain about the government here. You won't be taken out in chat and everything like that. We should appreciate that.
Absolutely. And Jerry, you're, you're, you're going, you're going on canvas in a little bit and we, from Bob Rushing and myself, we definitely want, we should the very, very best of luck. And you've been a councillor in Balmole for twenty-five years and hopefully you'll, you'll be there for another, another five.
People have a choice to have, yeah, or they don't, you know, but eh, eh, I, I do the best I can. I do the very best I can for people. And I know that when I put my head on the pillow at night. I ignore to myself, I done the best I could for that person today. And if I do, then I can sleep well.
Elect to buy some to represent God.
Elect to buy some to represent all. And as I have on the back of the leaf that I said. I have another little thing here, councillor Jerry Cole, working hard all the time, not just at election time.
I like that. Jerry, we would love to get you back on, cause you probably have a good time now. I'd love to talk about your political career. Um, I really love to do that, either before the elections and maybe get you back on or to talk about that. Because this is going to be one of my favourite all-time interviews.
Well, I'm delighted to hear that.
No, I'm from Derry.
Oh, you're from Derry? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I'm from the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, you had a wonderful man there, John Hume.
Oh, yeah, do you know John Hume? What, John Hume grew up with my mother.
I have a picture of myself and him and Albert Reynolds in the book. That, I have a picture of that when I met John Hume, when I was chairman of the council. But there is people alive today in Northern Ireland that wouldn't be alive before John Hume.
Yeah.
Right.
And that is not maybe. And if John Hume is not in heaven today, then God is there in his own.
Yeah. And Pashy's wife, you know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I met, I met relations of hers too. Yeah.
She taught me in school and it was the first time I ever heard anyone speak in Irish. And I always, when I think of Pashyam, I think she taught me in sixth class. Well, eh, not primary six, but we had primary seven in the north. She taught me Saint Darren's Primary School. And I always, she used to always, Oskill and Doris, that's, that's the only words I know in Irish, it's Oskill and Doris. And that's because I remember Pashyam saying it all the time and she always had a cup of coffee in her hand. And I was in the last class that she taught before she gave up her teaching career to go and work for John full-time.
Yeah, well, she was a real lady. herself and John were great people and you know. They, they were the ones that broke down the barriers. It's like, as I say, when the Irish went abroad, they built bridges, not walls. Across communities and across nations and across the world. And you know, we're, we're at peace now, that's the way to have it. Listen to other people's views, take them on board. And you know, I always say, nobody has enough of their knowledge.
No.
We, you know, we, you know, so we, we don't know, do we know it all? But we, we should listen to people who has views are different than ours.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's great to talk to you and eh.
Brilliant.
Will you come back on again in a couple of weeks?
Come back on again and if every year down the west, you come down here and you, you know what they say about eh, Erasal Balmolat, where I come from, in the most beautiful place in the world. You might leave tired, but you might leave tired, but you won't leave hungry. There's, there's no strangers here, only friends you haven't met. That's what it's like down here.
Yeah. And of course, Mayo for Sam.
Any year will do.
Yeah, yeah.
And if, if it will always be one of my favourite interviews.
Look at, I, 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 my mother, as I said, had a great saying, when you're telling the truth, you never need to remember it.
Yeah.
She, she was a wonderful woman too and look at, it's, it's, I was actually very blessed with the women in my life. Because my own wife here, she supports me. I have eh, well, I have six children, three boys and three girls. The girls and Geraldine keeps me on the line, keeps me to own the thing. But I wouldn't be able to do what I've done down the years without them and without their support. And I think every politician should acknowledge that too. You know, the, the public's here, public face here, but there's always the family at home that has been looked after too.
You come from a very, before we leave, we can't actually let you leave. A former Taoiseach, Agne Kenny came from Mayo as well.
Well, I was very friendly with him. Indi launched the book for me.
Did he?
He launched the book for me, yeah. Hind did on the launch, eh, eh, proper gentleman. A man that didn't get the respect that he deserved. Like my father and them people fought for political independence and Indicani got his own economic independence when he sent the tricat out of Ireland. That shouldn't be forgotten either.
He sent the tricat out of Ireland.
No, he sent the tricat, the tricat.
He sent the tricat out of Ireland. So Indicani sent the tricat, I can't say that word, the tricat out of Ireland.
They were the ones that was controlling our finances. They were in here, they were running the, 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 the banks and the tricat, they were here running our. Our financial affairs till Indi got to government. He was only four years in government when they were gone. So like, and you know, when Indi was telling us, you know, I'm going to make Ireland the best small country in the world to do business. And we were laughing about it. But that's exactly what happened. And the health service couldn't keep up with it. The education couldn't keep up with it. That he got people working. Look at, look at all the people that's working. You know, I, I hear people talking about how the cost of living and all that, but I never seen more money. That's what I see in the country at the minute. People are working. And that, that's eh, that's a testament to what ended on, you know, normal, simple, you know, straightforward talker, a straight talker. You know, he got stuck on and he brought people with him. And eh, I'm delighted to know the great Michael Ring. There's only one, no, there's only one Michael Ring. I can tell you that and there'll never be another, you know, but eh, I, it's.
He's right, he's right to that bit, a little bit of um, Galway Ross Common is, is now back in Mayo, so.
Oh, yeah, eh, yeah, but Michael Ring, he's eh, he's a wonderful character. And he, people associate with, he's like, he's like a celebrity. We were in Balmolat last year after the, the graduation of the kids from the. Sure, he was like someone you'd see on the X Factor or something. They all watched a picture with Michael Ring. It was.
And he did great work when he was Minister for, for Community and Rural Development, cause, cause there's, there's not a parish in, in the country. That has, that hasn't benefited from some of the initiatives that he brought, brought in.
Absolutely, one million percent some of the initiative. Because he thought rural, he was rural. He knew what it was like to leave Blackside and head off to Dublin for a meeting. I often seen him here in my house. When he'd be down on Balmolat meetings, he'd be resting on the couch then he'd drive off to Dublin to do his job as a T D. So like, look at these people, we should respect them, respect all politicians that go to your door. Respect all the people that puts the name on the ballot paper, because whether you agree with them or not, they're doing a job that needs to be done. You know, okay, that's, that's.
Thanks to Jerry Cole in Mayo. Thank you so much indeed. I'm going away today and I'm gonna be going, ah, 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 and I'm just, you're, 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 you're an Irish hero and you know what? Your father lives on in you and so will your son and so will your children.
I hope he does and I hope they pass it on. But if I am privileged enough to pass on to my kids what was passed on to me. Then this world will be a better place for us all to live in.
Do you know what, Paul? I've been thinking all through this interview, wouldn't it be lovely to eh, have an event? Here with the Irish Political Roundup and invite Jerry Cole down to talk at the event.
I'll, I'll talk, I'll talk, that's for sure. No bother.
Jerry, Jerry Cole, thank you so much indeed for taking the time to speak to Paul and I on the Irish Political Roundup. Thank you so much.
And thanks, thanks for having me on. Good luck, T-Ball.
Very welcome and very best, and very best of luck with the upcoming election.
Thank you very much. I hope you'll be able to, to, to interview me after, you will be said, the former councillor, Jerry.
Jerry, we want to interview you before and after regardless. You'll be elected. I imagine that you will, you will be elected by your people and they know you and they trust you and they admire and respect you.
I hope to do.